I always say we have the professionals that we hire and we ask for their input. And this is the input that he gave us. He thinks that it's not the proper place to put it. So, I take him as his word, but also, we want to try to accommodate and make it safe for children that are coming out. Perhaps between Dave and Mr. Purdy, perhaps they could come and say, maybe they should have a parent or a teacher, somebody at that door saying, "You cannot cross the street here. You can't do that." Have the proper signage up. Maybe we'll get some signs that light up. Let's have some, not only there, but we have lots of other places that this signage can be put up to let people know, "You're going too fast." There's children present. They have those lit up. I think we should investigate that and let's work with this. Let's try to, let's make it safe for the kids. But let's also work with the school and say, "Look, maybe you have to put somebody at that door." Also, maybe that the parents shouldn't be parking in there along the side where it's not safe. I sure as heck while wouldn't. We'll have my grandkids come out and have a chance that somebody's gonna speed by. You know, we have problems up on Main Street where we put the lighting where you press a button and people don't adhere to that. I mean, you see it all the time. So, I guess we gotta make people aware. And if we have to have the proper signage and if it has to be a lit signage, that, these are pretty unique. You can transfer these anywheres. They can be taken off poles, put anywhere as you want. We wouldn't need very many of them. Maybe you might only need two, three, but you can put them in key spots and move them anytime you want to move them. So, perhaps we could investigate that, but also work with the principal at the school and perhaps, you know, maybe sit down and have a talk with him.
No, that's not it for the day. I agree. My concern wouldn't be, will a child get hit if we don't put one up? My concern is, will a child get hit if we do and go against the traffic authorities? What do you do? I guess you try to do what we did when we were younger. If they're educating them in the schools and being tough enough about it and the letters out to the parents, I know you can't fix it, you can't fix everything, but those kids have to be told, "You cannot cross there." And put the crossing guards or something in the right place and direct the kids. It's a tough one, I know, but it's a tough one. But you have to listen to the traffic authority.
Would it be in order, your worship, to maybe invite Mr. Purdy to come to the next committee, the whole meeting with Mr. Ernst here and then with council and then we're all on the same page? And that's what I'm kinda thinking.
I think this puts us all on the right page.
Yeah, it does put us on the right page, but if there's some suggestion, I think with Mr. Purdy in the room and he can see our frustration and what, because I think the parents, and they are the parents in the center of our town, are looking that we're not really cooperating with the school. When in reality, I think common sense will prevail, that we are doing the best we can, that we're darned if we do and darned if we don't. And I think what we're saying would be much better if Mr. Purdy and maybe one or two of the members of a school advisory council came, be invited to the meeting with Mr. Ernst here, put it on an agenda item for either the March or the April committee, the whole. I mean, it doesn't matter when, that, you know, that we sit down with them and say, "Okay, what, how can we all work together on it?" So, I'd throw it out as a motion, that staff be directed to invite Jared Purdy and members of a school advisory council or staff to meet with the committee of the whole at some future date with the traffic authority in an effort to try to resolve crossing issues on Parade Street.
Phil seconded, but I just got, just a quick question. We've already discussed it here at this committee of the whole. I don't think there's any more to add to it. I would suggest, counselor, perhaps, perhaps he, Mr. Purdy, and a couple of his advisory committee, probably meet with the traffic authority, which would be Dave Ernst, see if they could work something out. I don't think they need to work anything out with me. I've said what I've said and I would say the same thing at that meeting. This letter says it all for me. What I said is, perhaps we need to make people more aware, and Mr. Purdy should be more aware that perhaps he needs somebody at that door to not let them cross that street. Or maybe send letters home, as the mayor says, that you shouldn't be parking there. Perhaps we need to patrol that a little bit more with our policing to have that done. And, you know, if it's for the safety, and that's what we're after, safety here, perhaps we need, the CEO, I'd like to hear him comment on what I had just mentioned about lighting. I think it's probably something that we should look at, sit down perhaps with the traffic authority or something, you could, and mention it to them. I think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
The RCMP as well. I'm sure they, a representative would stand and sit down.
Yes, yes, that's right. And enlighten us, right?
Help them with the kids.
Yes, that's right. Because, yeah, I know, and I know you're trying to do the best thing for everybody and sometimes you just gotta, you know, for them to come here and give a presentation, I don't know what good it would do for us. I really don't.
CIO?
I was just gonna suggest, I tend to agree that if the principal and the traffic authority wanna meet and perhaps bring the RCMP in, I don't mind participating myself, but this forum isn't the forum in which you're gonna work that out. You know, and I'm not saying that you guys, if you're particularly interested, couldn't be there. It's just that I don't believe that this forum is where you're gonna work out the details of that issue.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the motion has been seconded, so I don't mind withdrawing it. My only concern is, is that it is, it's gotta get done in some form. And I know in the past there has, and the only reason I suggest this body, I know in the past we've had groups that have met directly with the traffic authority and it never went well, in some cases. So, I'm glad that the CIO will be there. And again, if some of the councils are labeled who will be there, I'd like to sit in on it as well. It is, it is a concern that we have on Parade Street. No, there is not a great police presence on that street during that time. And I think, just to go back to Counselor Mackay, it is not a simple thing, counselor, of having somebody stand there at dismissal. Kids start arriving on that street from about five to eight until about a quarter to nine. They are similarly a full hour at lunchtime and similarly, there's an after-school program going on in that school. That school is hopping. You would have to have a parent volunteer, as you're suggesting, or a staff member. They're about three to four hours a day supervising that area. So, I think that's quite a task. So, it isn't just a quick five-minute fix. It's a proactive time. It happens and...
So, are we agreed to? Yeah. Okay. So, we're good on this one? Crosswalk Parade Street, peace and order by law amendment, first reading.
I don't know if you need any explanation. Yes, it does, but this, that's right. You can't do first reading here. This is just sort of, let you know, we had some issues with raccoon, raccoons, and so what's being suggested here is that we permit live trapping within the town. And, yeah, so that would come up on next month's council agenda for first reading.
Do you recommend?
Not necessarily, just.
It's coming. Okay, thank you. Grants to organizations? Nope, this is the...
Will we accept the grant organization's present? For please counsel. Will we recommend counsel or accept it?
Something, you seconded it, okay. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Bus route? Oh, where's my, there's my raccoons. Go ahead, CIO.
Okay, so, council had at its, I believe at the last meeting, approved that we proceed with the implementation of the transit with a modified route that carried traffic from the hospital straight up Chestnut Street. And since then, we've had some discussion. Counselor Langel brought to my attention that we might be missing an opportunity on Hibernia Street with seniors homes there and the fact that Community College is there. So, with your permission, we'll plan to modify the route. I think it's a good idea. The only real significant change there is that you make it, you end up making a left turn coming down Vancouver Street, which is not such a bad thing, given it's a signalized intersection. So, my suggestion is that we try that, we plan to try that as our route. And we do have some good news, and that is where our transit system would not be going across municipal lines. We are not necessarily required to receive an operator's permit through the utility review board. So, we just deal with motor carrier division of Department of Transportation. So, that speeds up our process a little bit. It also, so we'd be providing a municipal service versus achieving a motor carrier license where there's interveners and there can be, you know, that whole process. We could just simply decide we're gonna do this. That's fine, and if in the future, as is our plan, we would look to move this service out of the municipality, perhaps into a not-for-profit. That process could happen if a not-for-profit wanted to apply. It would take maybe a couple of months for them to obtain a motor carrier license, but we would have established the service. And so, the chances of interveners or any issues arising through that process would be somewhat minimized by the fact it's an established municipal service. Final thought, final thing is that we talked about a vehicle that would be roughly 14 passengers. Depending on what we're able to obtain through tender process, the motor carrier division does not require their vehicles, do not require vehicles such as this to be inspected through their process unless they're 16 passengers or more. Now, 16. And so, although we may not be required to go through their inspection process, that doesn't concern me because I think any additional diligence we have on the safety side is a good thing. So, but just to make you aware that this process of establishing this service may be getting a little easier because we're staying within town boundaries, which is kind of ironic when you think that, you know, government wants municipalities to cooperate. If we were cooperating with the District of Yarmouth, particularly on a route even going 10 feet into the district, we're now into a different regulatory process.
I guess everybody has to justify their jobs, I guess. I said I wasn't gonna talk anymore. Jeff, I was listening to, which I always listen to, TV. I gotta be careful here. I have to be careful here. Watching TV and they had a segment on there where they were talking about transit and I think it was uping Cape Britten Way up around that way where they're seeking, or it's maybe down South Shore Way, one of them. Anyway, we're looking at getting buses, secondhand buses, used buses from the HRM that they had surpluses of them. Would it be worthwhile, I mean, I think they're getting them very reasonable, practically, maybe even for a dollar or whatever. Is it worth looking into for a second bus? They'll do some, maybe some research on that, to look and see if we can, you know, maybe get one of those and spend some money and keep it for a secondary bus for repairs? I'll wait for your response.
Yeah, yes. So, I've obtained some bus specifications from a few different sources at this point. I think we should acquire a new bus as our primary bus. But as far as a secondary bus, someone's already mentioned HRM to me as a possibility. And, you know, if we purchase a bus, a brand-new bus, there's another avenue to look for a secondary bus there. I think a used bus, perhaps five years or so old, that has still got lots of useful life and a good service record, you know, absolutely. So, I did hear about the HRM thing, I think through Counselor Langel, and we'll investigate that.
I was just wondering, on the 14-passenger, you said that we wouldn't have to have yearly inspection, but on a, was that right? But on a 16, we would?
Right. So, the motor carrier division of transportation requires commercial vehicles, 16 passengers or more, to have this annual inspection by their inspectors. Whereas if you were providing a municipal service and she actually used example of a Sprinter like my van, you could run that van as a transit service within the town and just go with your regular MBI, motor vehicle inspection that everyone has at a local garage. The other inspection is annual and a little more thorough. I don't know, I don't know that, so I shouldn't say that. But I think it's a little more thorough, or at least it's done with a lens of a public carrier versus a private vehicle.
I was just wondering on where we probably are going to decide to put it in public hands later or in other private hands. Like, is that good, that they won't have that yearly inspection?
Well, that is a good question, and I guess the opportunity there is if they weren't required to and we felt, and this is part of the benefit of starting the service ourselves, is we can establish whatever parameters we want. So, if we said that we will contract out this service to a third party, we can require them in the contract to do that.
Okay.
Right? As part of contractual obligation to the town, even though it's not required under the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Zion Church lease.
Your worship, this is dealing with a bit of business that the council asks, asks that we attend to. And so, the former Zion Church, which is now owned by the museum, the property, there's a parking lot there and we've been using that parking lot as a free public parking space and we've been maintaining it. And in return, what they've asked for and council, I believe, agreed to, was that we would relieve them of the taxes that are levied on that property. So, we finally have the document here for you to approve, and if you do, we'll sign it up and we'll advertise that parking lot as free public parking. And as it turns out, it's close to Central School and there's a crosswalk at the corner.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Langel.
I love it. The only thing is, I'm curious, why is it dated 2014?
Because we dealt with this earlier this year and we're just getting the i's dotted and t's crossed now, so it would be covering this current fiscal year. It'd be 14, 15.
So, we're studying how much affected this data covers 2014?
Right.
So, we're holding back?
Yes, because council directed on this and so we have been maintaining and using it.
How much was the taxes on?
Taxes were fairly high because it's assessed as a commercial property. There's nothing on it that's commercial, it's just a parking lot.
Wow. Counselor Dennis?
Just a couple of things on that is, on page three, under the insurance, to maintain at her expense, so I take it it's supposed to be their expense, and then provisions. Also down further, provisions, under landlord's covenants and then provisions.
Nope.
That needs to be fixed as well.
Nope, that's the right provisos.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah?
Move the record into the council.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. I have a question. A little late for a question, but because we did this document, they don't come through grants to organizations for this piece, right? I know that's a silly question, but, right? This takes care of it. Okay, good. Next, correspondence for Action Immigrant Services Association Nova Scotia, request for presentation. Now, we've got a bunch of requests for presentations, for sure. Presentation there, YASTA. Most of these are, not most, okay. Just have to decide when we want what.
You can make that decision, your worship. Know the file?
Okay, we can do that. Just, I see YASTA's on here. He probably wants to do that before year-end to let us know what's going on.
ISANs.
ISIS, too. I know, I know. Okay, so, I would value the opportunity to address Yarmouth Town Council. ISANs.
You can make the arrangements, your worship, if you want.
I just need a motion to...
Will we accept the request when Tom is available?
Okay. Can I have a seconder? Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. YASTA presentation request for the March Committee of the Whole. Lynda, you can make sure that happens in. Okay. You have a motion for that one?
So, move?
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Presentation, smoke-free outdoor space. This Mike Muse from Cancer Society came in to see me and he's, yeah, all right, good. Motion to, for them to present?
So, move?
Moved and seconded.
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Forest Products Association of Nova Scotia, Sunday hunting. So, was this? It's a letter, but we were, we would probably, I would entertain a motion that we write, say, "I'm what we're in favor of." That we don't want Sunday hunting.
Not in favor, ready? I don't...
Not either. Okay, so, I would, we can discuss it, but I would entertain a motion to send a letter in support of taking Sundays off. Of, I'm not, you wanna make the motion? I can't make, I suppose I could make the motion, but, okay. Can I have a seconder?
Seconds for discussion.
Okay, discussion? All for the question? For, to have, no Sunday? Yes.
That's wrong.
Yes. So, families can enjoy their, okay. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Community housing options through collaboration and engagement.
Did I?
Did I? I just, I just did that. Forest Products, yeah, that was the Sunday hunting.
Sunday hunting.
Mm-hmm. So, the community housing, now, I forget, I did email Kathleen back and I sent her a copy of our, of our policy with regard to extra committees and stuff like that. So, are they looking to, I can't remember. Were they, they look? Okay, so, we're good on this one? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Catholic.
You know, your worship, we get summary, I noticed that lately through Tri, what is it, Tri-County Women's, whatever, we've been getting requests for, you know, they go for funding for studies and stuff like that. I'm wondering, what happens to these studies that are done? I mean, they put this all together and they go for this project, but is it possible that we can maybe get a copy of these studies? That, because I see a lot of these being developed by different groups and there seems to be a lot of studying going on, but as a teacher who has students, I think, for me to support this, I think, I think the time may be coming that we should be asking, could we get to see a copy of these puppies when they're done?
Then why don't you make that motion?
I'd make a motion, your worship, that we support this initiative on the proviso that we receive a copy of the completed study and perhaps other studies that this organization would like to share with the town of Yarmouth for our own research purposes.
Thank you. So, moved, seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Nova Scotia. Nova Scotia International Leadership Camp, Catherine Lewis support. Okay, just gotta find it. This is it.
Will we receive this?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Woodland Conference 2015.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Previously distributed. Additions, Y Reach. Dolores, Y Reach Immigration Settlement. So, I just added it today, or last night, Dolores sent that, just looking for a letter to support the program. Thank you.
Seconds.
Moved and seconded.
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Lynda, can we do that for Friday? She's just, and you can find her and tell her to come pick it up, maybe? She was looking for it for Friday. Okay, additions, in camera. It's 4:30.
We can move most of that to the council meeting without urgent.
Okay.
You have them for information. I would like to talk briefly about the current policy. If you have five minutes in camera.
Certainly can.
But it's gonna be five, as I...
You gotta get out of here. Why didn't you tell me? I wasn't watching the clock.
Well, I'm forgetting. Dave, I'm bringing out of here, too.
Can you wait three minutes? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
We won't be long.
See, we're spending $40 billion here in Los Angeles. We're gonna do a $40 billion transit expansion in Los Angeles.
$40 billion?
$40 billion.
Think you're gonna do that?
Definitely. Dave, what were you doing with that? Thinking up the lost time?
That's why I went like that. Yeah.